All right, I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand twelve. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fleet?
Here.
Mr. Anton?
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
And Chairman Richard?
Here.
We can conduct business if you would please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Commissioner Pill?
Well, here.
Well, are you mad at him?
No.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will I have you all standing, please? Anybody that's going to give any testimony tonight, either for or against any item on the agenda, you've got to be sworn in. So if you'd please raise your hands and then repeat after me, I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me, God.
I do.
I do? Okay. And I would request that any and all personnel except emergency responders, silence, any electronic devices, if you would. First item on the agenda is approval of our October ten minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Stan, was that you?
It was me.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
abstain.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, the minutes as printed are hereby adopted. New business, planning and zoning item one-two-zero-three-nine. Thomas Planca regarding the property located at one-twenty-six North Grant Street for the following. A, zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the thirty-five percent maximum allowed in ER three, single-family detached residence district for the purpose of constructing a pervious paver patio and private sidewalks.
Good evening, sir.
If you would sign in, there should be a sign-in sheet up there.
Oh, I'll get a free.
I don't see one. I am Thomas Planca, and I own the property at one-twenty-six North Grant. And as stated, the request is for a variance on the lot coverage, ruling of thirty-five percent maximum, and also to cover the fact that the village does not currently have an ordinance that covers the use of permeable pavers on sidewalks or driveways. There was a package that was sent out, I'm sure you all have it, that showed some discussion on what I've done so far on the lot to mitigate drainage off of the lot, such as we have a cistern, we have other methods that are preventing water from getting off of our property. The property is not particularly ours, but around us, the slope is around our property, and when we get very heavy rains, you know, in excess of three or four inches, water starts settling at the back of our kitchen door and then finds its way into our basement, causing some seepage and leakage on one side of the basement, which we're trying to eliminate with this action being requested. Any questions?
All right, sir. Is that pretty much what you care to enamorate as to the various holding basins that you have?
Yes.
I think everybody would like to see it, and if you have a map, a drawing, you could put it on the...
Yes.
On the scanner there?
In my first attempt, when we got into this, our contractor went straight to the village and started asking for the permits, and we ran into the permeability, or the coverage problem, which at that time, we had no knowledge of. Later, I find out that that was actually done, or that law went into effect, ordinance went into effect after we did all the construction on our property, which is historyed in the documentation. But as part of our process of making sure the water gets off of our land, we've got eighteen-hundred-gallon cistern underground, that's about not quite a hundred cubic feet of storage. The water from the main house, half of the roof goes down into that cistern through tiles that go underground. So you can see... So part of this roof area goes down into the cistern. In addition, we have a patio in the front that is a stone patio that is actually laid on top of roof joists, so it is not resting on the ground. And the space between the surface of the patio and the ground is basically, starts at about a foot and a half, and near the center of the patio, it centers at around three feet. This portion is built over our old driveway, which is our previous driveway, and we now have a garage in the back. So it's all permeable. Once the water gets in there, it sinks into this leftover stone from the driveway, so that covers part of our coverage area. The attempt I made in the letter was to take all of our impermeable surfaces and indicate that I'm doing some method to mitigate that impact on the lot, be it these drywells or other approaches. And then when I did the final calculations, I thought I was in tolerance to say, okay, this looks like a good project, not knowing the full interpretation of the rules and the regulations, the ordinances of the village. So what we did then, is working with the village staff, was, since my plan is for a rain garden, also included a drywell associated with that, and for building a small patio on the back, on the side of our garage. So when we looked at the final outlay of how much I had reduced the plan, what we said actually was that we have to go forward with the rain garden, and we have to make the originally planned drywell, which was a three-foot by three-foot by ten-foot long, or about ninety square, ninety cubic feet, we had to make that bigger. And worked with the staff, we came back, we had a start meeting with them and said, okay, we can do this, I'll just make it six-foot down instead of three-foot down. I haven't cleared that yet with my construction people, but, and that's part of the reason for drawings are not updated, the actual plan drawing doesn't show a six-foot by three-foot by ten-foot drywell. But we will change it to do that. Now, staff indicates that this will, in essence, accommodate all the water that my impermeable surfaces are still keeping on or near the lot. The rain garden itself is going to be about four-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred cubic feet of volume of its own, but staff indicated, based on the rules from the county, that because it's a rain garden, which means it's just a depressed area that has plantings on it to help mitigate the water, it doesn't really meet the criteria of being a true drywell. So even though it gives me greater volume, almost five-hundred cubic feet of water storage, it doesn't have a classification of a drywell. That's why the drywell had to be expanded to its planned expansion size. We also have a pond on the property, but the pond is designed in such a manner that any overflow from the pond settles into a reserve basin, which can hold approximately twenty cubic feet of water. From there, it would overflow into a fifteen-by-three-foot-wide, two-feet-deep ravine, which ends up then going into another drainage tile that is into a very small drywell at the end of that drainage tile. So the ravine can hold some water overflow from the pond in case the water, the rain is extremely number of inches. In addition, in the cistern, I have put in what in essence amounts to a sump pump, so that if the cistern gets up to its peak capacity before it would overflow into the yard area, the sump pump comes in, and that is an over-the-ground line draining to the front of the lot within the twenty-five feet from the front of the lot property. And that one is just an open line drain, and it just, you know, would be handled in any other way than any sump pump discharge would be handled by any other house. So we've made accommodations to accommodate all the, what we thought were the additional impermeabilities that we were putting on the lot, and obviously, we've had to go beyond that, and that's, the entire plan incorporates all those issues.
Okay.
Any questions, gentlemen?
We'll get to that in a second, sir. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? If not, we'll close the public comment. Does staff have anything?
Because the property has almost forty-nine percent lot coverage, our staff didn't feel comfortable bringing the proposal to the Planning and Zoning Commission until the applicant could show that he had mitigated the effects of the hard surface. And as Mr. Planca noted, our engineer reviewed the plans and said that the county would not accept all of the things that he had done on his property to mitigate the stormwater other than the drywell. So in response to our comments, Mr. Planca decided to double the size of the drywell, and that should take into account the additional hard surface on the lot, and then he also has the other pieces on his property, such as the rain garden and the cistern, which should help additionally, it's just not an accepted methodology by the county.
Okay. Jill, now that our information doesn't show the doubling of the drywell, will you pick that up with staff? We can rely on you to do that then?
Yes. We told Mr. Planca that we would take the proposal as he has recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then he said he could revise the plans in time for the Board of Trustees.
Okay, just so it doesn't get dropped in.
Correct.
Let's start with Commissioner Fleet, if you will, please.
With the sump pump that you mentioned, what happens if it fails?
Water would percolate up, out of the cistern, and would eventually find its way into the rain garden area, but the chances are that that's also going to have a fair amount of water in it. And there's no alternative except natural drainage towards the front of the lot.
No additional questions here. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I'm amazed at how much effort you've put into this. I mean, most people would not have done that. I really think it's a great idea, is what you've done, and I don't have any issues whatsoever with it, even though it is more lot coverage than we would like to see.
Right.
But as far as how you're mitigating it, and even what's not accepted, it's still mitigating it. You know, you just can't fight physics, you know, it's gonna...
Right.
It's gonna move, you know, the water's gonna move, and it's gonna go to those places where you've accommodated for it. So, once again, no other comments.
Okay, Commissioner Van Buren?
No, I agree with everything Commissioner Fidesco said. You've gone further than everybody I've ever seen in my many years in this board to mitigate any runoff from your lot. And I am a little bit surprised that we haven't updated our ordinance concerning the pavers or the permeable service. We don't give any credit for that. Is there any plan to do that?
Definitely. Our engineer is currently researching the other communities, and we'd like to bring it to the commission as a whole to adopt several methodologies that they're using.
Okay, now, about the rain gardens, are they generally accepted as being a deterrent to...
They're recommended, but they just don't hold as much cubic feet as, say, the drywell would, so that, or the pervious pavers.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, I'm all for your project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anton?
Is this the largest coverage we've ever seen?
I don't think so. I think we've had some in the fifty percent neighborhood.
Had some fifty-two, fifty-threes.
Maybe in my time. Well, it seemed like you've done a lot to mitigate it, and good luck with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
Thank you. May I ask how long you've lived in the house?
Forty-seven years.
Your comment caught me that, because I assume then you've done most of the building. I think in most of my visits, I don't think I've ever seen as much intricate building, and I don't think I've ever seen a front patio out to the front sidewalk like that before. It's an interesting concept, and I was intrigued by your description. It was complex, but you've actually put a lot of time and effort into that, and I applaud that. I was just curious if you had lived there shorter term. I'm not even sure when all the ordinances, I'm only twenty...
I think the ordinance on forty percent coverage, I think, was in nineteen ninety-eight.
Yes, I believe it was ninety-eight.
And our last...
Their coverage before that?
No.
No.
I think before that it was...
That's why, then.
Yeah.
Because I think that you indicated in the write-up that there was no record of any of this, changes and things like that, so...
Right, because the house was built in the twenties, correct?
The original house, no, we think the original house was probably built in the early World War II, so it makes it like forty-two-ish. But we moved in in sixty-seven, and we've been living there and making changes to the house and property all the way along.
Sure. Well, you can see it's probably a labor of love also, and I think those are the kind of things that help build community and things like that. So with the thought that you've put into this, I certainly support it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
I just wish we would, you would have brought this up during the summertime, so when I went back there to look, I would have seen it all in bloom and seen it all at its height, you know?
Well, the part that's there is actually native prairie, Illinois prairie plants, and they're not as colorful and as beautiful as other gardens might be. So you have to have a certain affinity for the type of beauty that that planting gives you.
Well, I appreciate the effort that you're going through to keep it the way it is, you know. I was surprised at the forty-nine percent. Once seeing all the work that was done back there, I was surprised that it wasn't higher. But you are going, doing your due diligence, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you.
And I have to echo my commissioners, my full of commissioners' comments as to the diligence and the depth of your report. As I talked to you today, your scientific background, it shows through very, it does you well.
Thank you.
Does you well. You did tell me about the depth of your rain garden. I think one other commissioner asked about the rain garden and...
It starts out on the south side at about a foot, and at the north side, it'll end up being a foot and a half, and at the north side is where the drywell is placed along that area also.
So that also is going to hold quite a bit of water?
Yes. The drywell, it should hold like a hundred-and-eighty-two cubic feet. If the rain garden ever gets full, it should hold like four-hundred-and-eighty cubic feet of water. And part of my problem with not knowing how to size it was that I went to find out a hundred-year rainfalls, which are in this area, about seven inches of rain. So I tried to accommodate that, but the problem, I did a fair amount of research, but I couldn't get a good feel for the percolation rate of how quickly this water is going to move into the soil of the rain garden. So I had to, over a period of time, I thought that I was being very cautious about making sure that it wasn't too small.
And then when we talked earlier today also, you alluded to the driveway off the alley, which is now pavers?
It's pavers that...
Pervious and...
Yeah, they're a little tighter knit than you would see in the, or tighter placement than you'd see in a regular impervious or permeable sidewalk. The pavers are actually from Westmont, when Westmont, I don't know, must have been in nineteen ninety-four or something, did major work along the road, they ripped up all those blocks that were on the side of the road, and they were giving them away free, so I got a truckload and I used them for my driveway.
Sure they were given away, sure they were.
Reuse.
Recycle. I got that truck, too.
So the other thing that that brought up, though, was that at the time that that was done, the alleyway was flush with the start of my driveway. Now, through improvements that the village has made on laying down stone every so often, that driveway, now the alleyway is about six to eight inches above the edge of my driveway. And the major problem that it presents is that when we get a heavy rain, that rain moves down, because the natural slope is kind of towards my property, it moves down the alley and then down my driveway. And when it got into our koi pond a couple of times, I really had to take action to make sure I could kind of avoid that, because the koi don't particularly like a lot of gravel floating around in their water. So we, I moved, I placed a number of different things in the way to make that water move towards a soil area, which I just did a very cheap rain garden by just kind of, you know, taking off six to eight inches of topsoil and moving it around, so that at least some of that water was captured there, held there, and then followed the natural drain between my neighbor to the south, their lot and our lot.
Well, again, I have to compliment you on everything you've done. I was a bit surprised when I first saw the amount of lot coverage, but you surely have taken care of my concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a request for a zoning code variance. May we have a reading of findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The improvements proposed by applicant will provide an aesthetic and functional upgrade to the property and will alleviate stormwater concerns in the rear yard. Applicant's lot was developed prior to the implementation of the forty percent lot coverage requirement, and the applicant cannot make any improvements, upgrades, or replacements to this property and receive a reasonable return on the property without the granting of a variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant seeks to lessen the impact of this variance by using permeable pavers and by taking other steps to improve stormwater drainage and pooling in the rear yard. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. All improvements will be located in the rear yard, will constitute upgrades over current conditions, will improve stormwater drainage for the property, and will not alter the character of the neighborhood. And just one small note, under criteria number one, should that say thirty-five percent there?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, if you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement, the findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item one-two-zero-three-nine. Item A, a zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the thirty-five percent maximum allowed in ER three, single-family detached residence district. So moved?
Second?
Okay, I'm sorry, a motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Fleet?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, Mr. Planca, you have our recommendation, and staff can tell you when to go before the committee withhold for the Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, sir. Planning and zoning item one-two-zero-four-zero, John Pelton of James D. Fiala Paving Company regarding the property located at fifteen South Cass, Westmont, for the following. A, special use permit request to operate a ground floor office in the B-one Limited Business District. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sorry, I'm just signing in. Good evening, I'm with Fiala Paving. Unfortunately or fortunately, we're doing the Fifty-Fifth Street job, which I know everyone's been impacted by, and I don't hold that against us, please. It's been a long, long, arduous task. I don't know if you knew about the job coming in, there's supposed to be seven-hundred-foot of Nykor pipe on the job, there turned out to be ten thousand. So we had, we've been delayed and delayed and delayed, so we're kind of piecemealing in the thing, and finally, we're going to get the paving, and yes, we are going to get surface down before snow flies. So we'll actually start surface from the east next, coming up Friday. So we're going to, we're progressing the best we can. We had a, for a job, bigger jobs, you have to get a field office for the engineers to run the job, basically for all bookwork and computers and what have you, and a place to go back and have meetings if necessary. So we were looking to use that, the building at fifteen South Cass as the field office. It's a temporary thing we're requesting for the special use permit, probably need it until roughly, probably May by the time everything gets finalized out, by the time you go through all the quantities and everything else, and it comes off the books. It's the back corner of that, I can actually, does this, I'm not sure.
It'll come on by itself.
It'll just come up? It's the back corner of the lot. There's a deli here, there's a hair cutting place in the middle, and then it's a small, small corner office. From what I understood from Mr. Gottwald, who owns the building, is that hadn't been rented in two to three years. So the benefit is someone, you know, an owner of a building is finally receiving some sort of rent and being able to hopefully, you know, help with his mortgage payments and stuff, along with us benefiting from being close to the job. There's, you know, it's in the back corner, so we're really not impacting anybody in that regard. We only have a couple cars that come in and out, and the size of that office is only two-hundred-and-thirty-one square feet, from what I had measured up for this. And like I say, this is going to be just a temporary thing, so we're not going to hold the office for a long time, but it would benefit our project going forward.
Very good. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this? Let's close the public comment, we'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
I have no questions. If it's going to get the job done quicker?
Trust me, I hope so. It's wearing me out.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions directly on the proposal, I think it's a good idea. I'm curious, one of our trustees regularly posts the percentage of completion of the project. Where do those numbers come from?
You know, it's basically on quantity completed, so dollar value, so...
So there's not a website that the public or myself could go to?
No.
To see?
But you could, but you could, this is basically, it's through IDOT, but DuPage County's the RE for it, so the DuPage County gentleman could, Paul Kohler could, not Kohler, Paul, oh my God, I'm sorry, I forgot his last name, Kruger, Kohler's the other gentleman that works there. He's the RE for it, and he'd be able to give you any information you needed.
No, I just wanted to look, a quick look up, you know, when you're just trying to figure it out. I see they've posted like seventy-eight percent completion now.
You know where you can, because it is an IDOT job, you actually could, on the IDOT website. If you know the contract number, you can actually go to the IDOT website, and you can actually go to, see the different estimates that have been paid, the public can look at any of that at any point in time.
And with the May request, does that mean you're expecting it to go through the winter then? It's going to be unfinished through the winter?
I definitely expect to have, yes, for my engineers to do their paperwork and...
But the roadway will be unfinished through the winter?
No, I'm hoping that's, like I told you, I sure hope. Right now, you know, if you want a little brief synopsis of what's going on, I could give it to you if you'd like. We'll start surfacing down at the east end. We'll have, we'll finish surface up to, rough terms, Warwick on Monday. On Tuesday, we'll binder casks in the cross part that doesn't have binder, that we just ground, so that'll get bindered. So in that period of time, obviously, it'll hit Thanksgiving, but in that period of time, we're giving our electrician time to cut the detector loops in that area. We'll probably come back and we'll surface the west end, maybe on that Wednesday, you know, this is all barring weather and what have you, but on the west end, and then come back. After all the detector loops are cut, we'll be able to surface, because you put detector loops in your binder. So you have to cut all those in before we can put the surface on there. And then we'll be able to, be looking for a turn-on of the lights, I think it's the twenty-ninth, and then we'll be able to pull those temp poles, finish the sidewalk, and obviously, we're going to have some touch-up stuff, landscaping, but behind the curb more than any, anything on the roadway that'll impact the roadway.
Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Anton?
You guys have your own plant, or you rely on?
Yes, sir.
You do? The other question I had was, yeah, when is it going to get done?
Yeah, trust me, it's wearing me out. It was supposed to be done October, I think, twenty-ninth or something, from what I can remember, it's beginning of November, I'm confusing two of my jobs.
I think it's a good idea, trailers get really cold, cold floors, that's all I got.
Mr. Van Buren?
No questions.
Commissioner Fidesco?
No questions.
Mr. Fleet?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Since we have a special use permit request, we'd need a reading of the findings of fact, please.
That the establishment, maintenance, or operations of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All office operations will be conducted indoors, and this use will not adversely affect the public welfare. This office will eliminate the need for a construction trailer on the site of the Fifty-Fifth Street Road. Street Road construction project. Number two, that the special use will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. This proposed use is consistent with surrounding uses and will not result in adverse light, noise, or traffic, and will not adversely affect surrounding property values. For tier number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The applicant will occupy an existing building and surrounding lots are fully developed. Criteria number four: The adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property is currently improved and served by all necessary utilities, storm sewers, and other necessary facilities. Criteria number five: That the adequate measures have been, have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. This use will not attract retail or other customers, and sufficient off-street and public parking is available for applicant's use. Criteria number six: That the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. The proposed use meets all regulations of the village's codes and ordinances, and no variances are sought in conjunction with this use.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning, item 12040. A special use permit request to operate a ground floor office in the B1 limited business district.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and I hope you get done with the road, but I occupied the office for a long time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Planning and zoning, item 12041. Ramius Sukuvisis with Naringa Kohler regarding the property located at 6002 South Cass Avenue, Unit B, for the following: Item A: Special use permit request to operate a wrestling school in the B2 limited business district. Good evening, sir, I hope I pronounced it halfway decently.
Yes. Good evening, my name is Ramius Sukuvisis. I would like to open a wrestling club at the property located in Westmont, at the 6002 South Cass, Unit B. And the practice hours that I would like to have there should be somewhere between 4:00 and 9:00 PM. Summertime hours probably would be different, because most of our kids have no school, so it's, I think it should be, I would like to have it somewhere in about noon time. And depending on the number of our kids, I'm going to split them in a different age groups, separate age groups, and each group shouldn't be more than, than 10 people. And the starting ages should be from seven years old and up. And if everything goes as I planned, I would like to open it in the beginning of January.
All right, sir. You seemed hesitant on your hours of operation, and if I'm correct, if he is granted a special use, the hours of your operation are anytime you want, so you're not relegated to anytime except...
Correct, unless there was a special condition associated with it.
A special condition, so you can operate your school all day long, you realize that?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? We'll close the public comment. Staff?
The shopping center has sufficient parking, and we have no concerns about the hours of operation or the use in the shopping center.
Okay, thank you.
And may I as well?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to point out that the applicant was before us a couple of years ago on another location on South Cass, and as promised, he said he would come back at some point in the future, and has found a different property to open his school at.
Okay. We'll start with Commissioner Fleet, if you would.
I really don't have any questions. I know from, and I'll transition into here, seeing your property, and wish you good luck.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I do remember you coming here before, but I just don't remember, were you going to sell any wrestling equipment, like helmets and...
Yes, I would like to do that in the future. I will have samples of wrestling gear somewhere hanging on the wall, and kids, you know, they can place order, and I can get it online.
I mean, there's a slim bit of sales tax that'll come from this, but very slim, because I know that they don't, it's not something that sells on a regular basis. So, okay, I was just concerned, I was just wondering if that was going to happen. Otherwise, I don't have any issues. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anton?
I wish you good luck with that, and I wouldn't mind if I could bring Commissioner Thomas in there, I bet I could pin him in about 10 seconds. Would there be any tournaments there, though? Seriously, would there be any tournaments at that location?
I'm not planning any.
No? No MMA or anything like that? All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
No questions, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
No, welcome. Thank you for giving Westmont another, another shot.
Thank you.
And I, sir, also welcome you back again. Since we have a request for a special use, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one: That the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The proposed use will be conducted completely indoors in an existing strip center tenant space, and will not result in adverse noise, light, odor, traffic, parking, or other adverse impacts on the surrounding properties. Criteria number two: That the special use will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. All operations will be conducted indoor in an existing tenant space and will not adversely affect surrounding properties. Criteria number three: That the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The proposed use will occupy an existing tenant space in a strip center and will not impede the orderly development of surrounding property. Criteria number four: The adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property is connected to all essential utilities and public sidewalks, and off-street parking is available for the applicant's use. Criteria number five: That adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The property contains adequate ingress and egress from Cass Avenue and contains sufficient off-street parking to accommodate this use. Criteria number six: That the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. No variances are required for this proposed use, and the use meets all regulations of the B2 general business district. Criteria number seven: The proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition two. This use will not cause appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety. The class size is expected to be 10 students plus one instructor, and sufficient off-street parking exists to accommodate this use. Public sidewalks are available for students who walk or bike to this facility.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees under planning and zoning, item 12041. Item A: A special use permit request to operate a wrestling school in the B2 limited business district. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation, and staff can tell you when you'll go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, item 12042. Village of Westmont Fire Department regarding the Marriott Hotel property located at 3500 Midwest Road Book for the following: Item A: Zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure in the B3 special business district. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jim Conley, Deputy Fire Chief here in Westmont, here to speak to you, actually about this item and the next item, their related system. I'll give you the quick background. This is a project we've been working on for approximately 18 months. Project include developing the participation of seven other fire and police agencies, working with Oakbrook Hills to get the antenna locations and siting of these, selecting a vendor and getting bids, or getting bids and selecting a vendor, probably the correct order, getting our board approval, contract approvals, and then also the ETSB funding of this project. And just for order of magnitude, this is approximately half a million dollar project. We've been working with our neighboring departments to update and realign conventional public safety radio in the southern part of DuPage County. This project is key to that effort. Last month, the village board signed a memorandum of understanding with the villages of Clarton Hills and the tri-state fire protection district for this combined project and the construction of this radio system, technically more of a modification of two radio systems. The other participants in the system include Downers Grove, and Downers Grove is our village dispatch center for the village of Westmont, also includes the village of Hinsdale, Willow Springs, and Oakbrook. The DuPage County ETSB, as I mentioned, is funding this project. The village pays upfront, and then they're 100% reimbursed. This is a critical infrastructure project. This is critical to emergency safety publication, communications for public safety in the southern part of DuPage County, particularly for Westmont Police and Westmont Fire. The current public safety radio equipment is located at this location, both used by Westmont Police and Fire. What you'll see, and what you've probably seen in your packet, this is a overlay of photos of equipment, so it's kind of a mock-up of what this might look like. If you can picture, Oakbrook Hills, this is the southeast corner, southeast corner of the elevator penthouse. Obviously, looking at a very close-up view. Those microwave dishes that are being pointed to there are approximately three feet in diameter, so you're looking at a, a close-up shot to get a perspective of what this would look like. This is taken from the apartment across Cass Avenue to the west, which would be, other than the condominiums on the property, this would be the closest vantage point. If you can see a very, there's a large, larger dish right there. The penthouse is here. There is a microwave dish which you can almost see right there, and our dishes would be of similar size to what you can almost see there. That's about the only visual impact this will have. There's a antenna there, vertical antenna there, that antenna will be removed and replaced with a new one that has new capability. That's really the substance of the project. We'd, again, first of all, let me thank my colleagues here from Community Development who've helped the Fire Department through this process, appreciate their help. Again, a critical project for public safety, and we'd appreciate your quick review and approval. We need to take this before the village board tomorrow evening, if all possible.
Okay. Any public comment whatsoever on this? We'll close the public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was too fast, I apologize.
Needs to be sworn in.
Hi, I'm Ms. Marilyn Goodman. Marilyn Goodman.
Marilyn, okay, you're in need to sign in, but also, I have to swear you in.
Okay.
So, if you would, please, I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I live at 22, 2235th Street, right across the street from the Oakbrook Hills Hotel. And I was wondering about this antenna. I, I can see the front of the building from my house, and I was wondering, is this going to interfere with my TV or anything, or any problems that it would arise? And also, I don't think I particularly like the looks of it. Will it interfere with airways, or airplanes, or things like that? I don't know. Those are my concerns.
All right, I'll have the Assistant Fire Chief answer your questions.
Your man. I would say if you're not having a problem with your TV right now, you shouldn't have any in the future. It's basically a system operating in the same radio frequencies that are currently used in the village of Westmont. I should introduce John Sullivan from ABIP Radio, who's our vendor, is here, can also add to any technical questions. But the system is very low power compared to commercial radio. This is 100 watts or less, kind of like the same power as a light bulb in your house, that's about the power of the radio, and it only operates a few minutes out of every hour, so you should not see, you don't see any effect today, you shouldn't see any effect in the future. As far as aesthetics, you look at the front of the building, this is on the back of the building, so the only piece you'd ever even see from your house would be the, the little vertical antenna, which would probably be, if you can't see it today, whatever you see today, you wouldn't see anything more than what you see today. So, it really should have no visual impact either. Any other questions?
If I may ask, the two microwave dishes, they are actually heading, if I'm not mistaken, south and...
Southeast and southwest. One points to Downers Grove.
Southwest, so...
One points to Downers Grove, one points to Clarton Hill, so they're behind the building, you would not even see them.
Yeah, so, they would not even point toward your property on 35th Street. They would be pointing away from your property.
And, and not visible.
Okay. Do you have any other further questions, if you would, ma'am?
No, I was, I was looking at the aesthetic, I mean, I like looking at the building.
If you would, please, the audience at home cannot hear your answers.
Okay. I was thinking of the aesthetic value of the property. I don't want to see any high thing in that, so it would interfere with the beauty of the property. It's a beautiful place, it has beautiful golf courses, and I'm very happy with the way it looks.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any further public comment? If not, we'll close the public comment, and start with Commissioner Thomas, or staff, I'm sorry, staff, do you have anything?
That's okay.
Pardon me, Jill.
As Deputy, Deputy Chief Conley mentioned, this is a joint project that should improve public safety, and staff generally recommends that co-location occurs so that we decrease the number of new towers that are necessary.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, if you would.
Now, the upgrade in the system is, everybody can hear everybody else, is that the...
That is correct. This is a repeated radio system, so there's multiple receive sites, and Oakbrook Hills has been a receive site for approximately 15 years, and it is the workhorse site, it's the best site in the area. So, it's one of the main reasons I want to make sure we continue to use this site. It'll be used for both police and fire, repeated radio, so multiple receivers, and what's new will be multiple transmit sites, so we get redundancy, so if you, even if you lose a site, you still have capability, which today, we have a single failure type system.
You need to, you need to hear.
It's very important we hear, yes.
Thank you. It's all in.
Commissioner Pill?
No questions.
Commissioner Anton?
No questions, sir.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No questions.
Commissioner Fidesco?
No questions.
Commissioner Fleet?
Notes, sir.
And Chairman Richard has nothing. All right, since we have a zoning code variance request, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one: The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The property currently contains approximately 20 antennas on the roof of the hotel. The applicant seeks to co-locate its new two microwave dishes and three antennas with the existing antennas and equipment. Without this variance at this location, the applicant would be forced to place the dishes and antenna on another tall structure in the immediate area if possible, or construct an antenna tower to accommodate this need. Since co-location of such equipment is desired by the village, the applicant cannot yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two: The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant seeks to co-locate its dishes and antennas with existing equipment and antennas. The proposed facilities will be set back from the roof line and will not The proposed facilities will be set back from the roofline and will not cause structural concern to the hotel roof, and utilizing this location may avoid the installation of a new antenna structure. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Existing antenna and equipment are present on this roof. The equipment will be set back from the roofline so as to minimize its visibility to surrounding property owners, and this additional equipment will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a zoning code variance request are hereby approved.
Thank you, sir.
I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 12042, a zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure in the B3 Special Business District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Anton. I think I heard you first.
Sure.
Okay, question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, sir, if you would. Next item on the agenda, planning and zoning item 12043, Village of Westmont Fire Department regarding the water tower located at 20563rd Street for the following. Item A, zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure in the R1 Single Family Detached Resident District.
Thank you, sir. All the comments I made previously pretty much hold true for this site, so I'll save you repeating myself. Again, this site at 63rd Street Water Tower has also been used by our police department, not by, not by fire, as part of public safety communications. Again, it's an ideal site for the southern part of our community. Over years, we've had many difficulties, many difficulties with our communication in the southern part because we did not have a good receiver site. This is a very effective site, it's centrally located within our southern protection area, so it works, works well along with the other sites that are part of the system. Similar to the equipment that's being installed at Oakbrook Hills, there's an existing antenna, which is the police antenna today, that will remain. We would add one UHF antenna for our new police radio system that would look very similar to the one that's next to it. Roughly to scale, probably a little oversized, are the two microwave dishes, and then the two little circles are GPS antennas, and Director Malik was actually correct, going back to Oakbrook Hills, we said one, it's one significant one, and there's two of these little GPS things about the size of your fist. I wasn't counting those, but there's, technically, they're part of the antenna system, so if you count them, they're an antenna, but they're very, very small, they're about the size of your fist. The only substantial antennas are the UHF antenna, vertical, similar to the one that's there, and two microwave dishes, similar to what we discussed at Oakbrook Hills Hotel.
Okay.
And I could give you, sorry, to give you a perspective, this is looking from the, from the west by the Westmont Yard soccer facility. You can see what the existing antennas look like up there. That skinny one is our antenna, so it'd be something equivalent to that. That would give you a perspective of what it might look like.
And since this is right in my backyard, I'm very happy to have you do it.
Thank you, sir.
Marilyn, Ms. Goodman, would you care to comment on this?
No comment.
Okay, we'll close the public, let's start with Commissioner Staff, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Staff.
This will be beneficial to public safety, and it would be very difficult to discern a difference from the public right of way with the additional equipment.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleet, if you would.
No questions, sir.
Commissioner Fadesco?
No questions.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No questions.
Commissioner Anton?
No questions.
Commissioner Pell?
No questions.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
I have no questions. Since we have a request for a zoning code variance, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The property currently contains nine antenna on the existing water tower. The applicant seeks to co-locate its new two microwave dishes and three antennas with the existing antennas and equipment. Without this variance at this location, the applicant would be forced to place the dishes and antenna on another tall structure in the immediate area if possible, or construct an antenna tower to accommodate this need. Since co-location of such equipment is desired by the village, the applicant cannot yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant seeks to co-locate its dishes and antenna with existing equipment and antennas. The proposed facilities will be set back and at such a height so as to minimize the appearance to surrounding properties, and utilizing this location may avoid the installation of a new antenna structure. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Existing antennas and equipment are present on this water tower. The equipment will be located so as to minimize its visibility to surrounding property owners, and this additional equipment will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. The findings of fact for a variance request are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 12043. Item A, zoning code variance request to permit more than three antenna on a structure in the R1 Single Family Detached Resident District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fadesco, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Pell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fadesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, your requests are hereby approved. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Staff, have any?
No other comments. I have one item. Just a quick update on the comprehensive plan for everyone's benefit. As the community has been working on this for quite some time, earlier this year, we had a well-attended community workshop at the very coldest time of year, early January, and our consultants have been hard at work on the draft plan, which was received in its completed, mostly completed state at a comprehensive plan steering committee about a week and a half ago. The group has met and discussed it over five or six sessions, and it's likely that we will not require another steering committee meeting.